All right, we are in, it is two o'clock on November 4th, 2020. This is our bi-weekly administrative workshop. Call the meeting to order. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
Is that here, Mr. Chair?
I'm motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Bold.
Aye.
Vice Chair voice.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Hi.
Motion carried unanimously.
We're going on to number three, Projects Workshop. Curry Watershed and Invasive Species Update. The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Let me go get my PowerPoint turned on here.
Welcome, Ms. Tim Jack, Ms. Minster.
Yeah.
First time I met you was when the, it was in the bottom of Elk Creek.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, like me or Erin? You know, we can all be found in the middle of creeks at some point in time. Okay, you know what I was just thinking? Do you want to advance the slides to me? Or does it go here? Oh, I got it here.
Yeah.
Boom, check it out. Okay, so, I am Kelly Tim Jack.
You can take your mask off if you like.
Uh, is it hard to hear me?
No, you're actually fine.
I don't want to spit on everybody. I'll just go for it.
Great.
Um, Kelly Tim Jack, Coordinator for the Lower Rogue Watershed Council, and a part of the Curry Watershed Partnership. So, the Curry Watershed's partnership, we like to go over this each time because we are a confusing bunch. This would be the Curry Soil and Water Conservation District, the South Coast Watershed Council, and the Lower Rogue Watershed Council. And what I don't have up here right now is there is also a nonprofit, the Curry Watershed's nonprofit, that is associated with our team as well. So, what we try to do is to improve ecological outcomes. We also try to inspire conservation and stewardship. And we like to improve the economic and community wellbeing of Curry County. Those are our goals. Those are hard to wrap up into one, but I think we do pretty good at it most times. So, I'm just going to stick high level today because I really do want to focus a lot of our time on the weeds. But we do have a few programs at our office at the partnership, and one of these is the Youth Education Program. Super strong program, really involved in the schools all across Curry County. And this year, they just recently finished a strategic plan. So, they've now switched their focus, they're switching their intent, they've written a mission finally, and a vision. So, I'll read the mission. You guys can listen to the vision and read that yourselves. They're, they're a little long, but meaningful. So, the mission is to provide hands-on youth education in an outdoor setting, and then to promote curiosity, critical thinking, and community connection. So, I think the really important part about that mission statement is to really realize that what we're trying to equip kids with is to be able to really participate effectively in these decisions that impact our communities with our ecosystems. So, we're trying to give kids the right skills to come and participate, join boards, join teams, you know, join all these different community groups that do actually make a difference in a lot of different realms. So, it's not just about science. So, yeah, this is just some photos that we have from the Youth Education Program. This is the stream trailer in the middle. And the children down at the bottom are using all their pre-measuring sticks on a workshop to do some forest health activities. The Youth Education Goals for the Strategic Plan, we switched those up a little bit this year, and I feel like they're really keyed in now to really serve our program. So, the first one is to support the school's achievement of state and national educational goals. We can't be in our schools and doing things with our schools if we're not helping teachers to do their jobs as well. So, the better we are at connecting our programs and lessons to what the schools have to teach, the easier that is for people to adapt. So, that's what we're really working towards. We're also trying to structure our education program to enhance commute, uh, sorry, cumulative learning, and then encouraging that broad skill development. So, we used to really focus on, it's just watershed science, it's just these things. And like I said earlier, now we're talking more broadly, by giving them thinking skills, critical thinking skills, looking for facts, you know, observing things around them, all these sort of skills. And then, thirdly, we'd like to establish a foundation for the program's sustainability and growth. That's the funding piece. So, we're trying to get a little more streamlined there in folks, in our funding. Another program we have is a monitoring program, which has taken a big hit this year. In effect, a couple of our programs have taken a big hit with the COVID-19. As you guys all know, the lottery dollars were down for a while. The good news is, good and bad. Now that bars are open and things are open, people are continuing to gamble and to increase their lottery revenues at higher scale. So, they are actually seeing better projections than they thought they would originally see. So, monitoring is one of those things that was a little bit sketchy over the last year to fund. However, we do have some bread and butter projects, like summer temperature monitoring, which we do in several watersheds all over the county. That information is available if anybody wants it. This is Erin on the far right pointing at a thermometer in Lobster Creek. This is the Beaver Dam in God Wants to Slough here on the Rogue River, and we monitor temperatures in there as well. And this is Pistol River. So, one of the other initiatives the monitoring program is taking on is a Pistol River Strategic Implementation Area. That's a mouthful, but that's the Oregon Department of Agriculture's, it's their effort to focus on a watershed. So, Pistol River is that in our county at this time. And the other thing the monitoring program is doing is working on a high school project with us. We have a SMILE program now with, it's an OSU program, that is going on with the high school here. So, now, high school kids are going to be coming out and doing monitoring in the God Wants to Slough before we do the work next year, and then they'll continue that for the next three years. The other thing we did do, which was fantastic, were the river cleanups. We kind of thought everything was going to get canned this summer, and, and most things did kind of in one way or the other. But we, they called us the COVID Edition because we still got out there. There were less people, but we still made a good impact. And so, we were able to do this on the Rogue River again. We didn't do the jet boats and all that this year, but we did have people go out and clean up the gravel bars around the town and the beach as well. So, we had about thirty-two volunteers in the Rogue River that went ahead and cleaned up probably about five cubic yards of trash that day. And there was more left out on the mill bar as well, that the port partnered with us to go out and get. And we had some grand prize winners. We handed out lots of prizes, it was pretty fun. And the Chaco River Cleanup also happened, and they had about thirty volunteers as well, and also got about five or six cubic yards of trash. So, it was still an eventful time, even though it was low-key. We were happy that we could get people out connected. For the Lower Rogue Watershed, as far as next year and this year, what we've been really focusing on is this big Rogue Estuary Restoration Project, which is happening in the slough right here. This is God Wants to Slough, comes right along the edge here, and that's overwintering habitat for Coho salmon, as well as summer rearing habitat for Chinook salmon, and several other species in Beaver. We're also doing some work at the Indian Creek Off-Channel Ponds that are kind of have that little tidal connection, just downstream of Indian Creek proper. So, we'll be doing all the implementation in this work, large wood installments, some slope banking, and some riparian work in summer of 2021. But right now, we're still doing monitoring and preparing for the project. And again, the project goals are to increase habitat quality for salmonids and all fish and wildlife species, increasing the availability of that habitat, and then also partnering with the high school to make it a community project. Go ahead, Court.
I hate to interrupt you, but just on the God Wants to Slough there, is that a raft you have?
Is it a raft I have?
You have top-left photo of it?
Oh, that's my paddleboard.
Oh.
Yeah, I hike in a paddleboard and through the Freeman Trail and all my gear, and so that's the front of my paddleboard all, all, I've tagged up there.
The reason I ask, we idled in there the other day. We didn't see the Beaver Dam, so we might not have actually been in the God Wants to Slough. But all, you're seeing them in your, your far-right picture there?
Yeah.
Uh, with Frank Burris and Cam Perry and a couple of the scientists, a guy from Missis, uh, Mississippi anyway, Dave. It was just incredible, the habitat in there that we, you know, and going in there by motorized boat, we're just going like two miles an hour.
Oh, yeah.
You know, not kicking up any sediment or anything. It was just, it was really tricky boating, it was just a kick. And so, to see you were in there and recognize that, that habitat, it is, you know, because at one time, they're talking about at the top by the Champion Mill Site, opened it up, so, so the flows would come through, and we're thinking, no, that's probably not a good idea to recommend it.
Yeah, yeah, it is interesting how that changes over time when you kind of think about it and think about what you're trying to accomplish. But, yeah, we've been in there with ODW and boats too, and it's very tricky. It's really shallow, it's quite shallow even at high tide in there. So, you do have to be really careful.
Yeah, we're in a lot of fourteen, fifteen-inch water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so you, you probably were in there. It's a really long slough. I think a lot of people don't recognize either how far it goes up, and you know, when you say, is this it, is this it? And you keep going. So, Saunders Slough is up above there too, that's, that's quite long as well.
Where exactly is that, that top picture?
This one here?
Yeah.
God Wants to Slough.
How far up the river?
Oh, a little finger, oh, the bridge is literally right here. Here's, uh, you know, it's like a half a mile.
You see Elephant Rock right at the top?
Oh, that's my ranch that across.
Yeah, yeah, your ranch is right over here.
All right.
Yep.
I thought that looked a little bit, can you pick out?
Looks familiar, see? Does this look familiar?
Oh, there's the Cedars, yeah.
Yeah, there's you. You can always see those, those guys.
I always see the Cedars, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big feature. Yeah, so stay tuned. I'll probably talk to you guys a little bit more about details next year, but we will see a lot of work go on in there next summer.
Well, we did, we did, just so you're on this, there are some things going on. I think I've spoken to you about it already. Now that we may have a change in the president, I don't know, but that may all be put on the back burner now. But we have Corps of Engineers and someone else from Washington coming down to look at this again about getting some of that rock out of the river.
Okay, cool. I mean, I'd love to, if you don't mind me being a fly on the wall or, you know, anything, or just keep you posted, but I would be happy.
If it happens.
Yeah, yeah, just to tell them so they know what's going on on this side of the river too.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, that's a really protected area for the most part, but it's certainly, as we all know, anything you do in one spot in the river changes everything in the other places in the river, so. So, since Miranda cannot be here, she's the South Coast Watershed Coordinator, and she has a, what, six-week-old baby? Very fresh baby girl. So, I am just giving some high-level accomplishments for the South Coast Watershed Council, which, the Chaco River, they did a lot of stuff in there. And Panther Creek, which is a tributary to the Chaco, large wood installments. They've been doing a lot of work around sediment abatement with the fire as well for the, from the Chaco Fire. They have started their Phase One work in Elk River, which is a lot of wintering habitat, but you know, the usual suite of things, the riparian, fixing sediment inputs, doing fish passage, water quality, weeds, which you're going to talk about. And then there's some work down in the Windchuck as well, in the estuary, where there was also a lot of erosion occurring down there. So, they did some big stabilization work down there as well. So, this is my last slide, and so this is just sort of as we're gearing up for next year, coming to a watershed to you. The Rogue Estuary Restoration is super exciting. That's a really large project with a lot of really great partners. And I'm really happy we have the Gold Beach High School on board now too. That's something new for us. We'll be continuing the Pistol River assessments, so they're looking at a lot of sediment transport, and how things move, and modeling in the estuary of Pistol River as well. We're rolling out this new education program, so Kathy and Stacia are working really hard at that to make sure we're making all the right connections with school gardens and schools as things get going, and after-school programs, outdoor school. Those things are still going. So, we're also rolling out a new long-term monitoring plan. Our monitoring coordinator just finished that. So, he took all of our data from like the last twenty, twenty-five years and kind of distilled it all into like, what's meaningful, what do we need, how do we move forward? So, that's implementing right now. And then we just finished a community outreach strategy, like a plan for our partnership as well, because we are really trying to figure out how to best serve our communities too during this time. There's a lot of focus on COVID, as there should be, but we still want to remain relevant and useful to our community and make sure that we're helping where we can be helpful. So, this is a strategy that we're implementing to basically build better relationships with landowners, with funders, with local donors. And that happens through, the last thing, one of them is that we have a brand-new website. So, I hope you guys will go and check it out. It has a lot of really great information about each of our programs and all the staff. We have managed to keep all thirteen staff during this time, which is a testament to the hard work that people are doing there. We all are completely grant-funded. So, there has been some scary moments, and sort of like, I might have money through here, but we've managed to do it, and so we will keep trying. So, I think that's all I have for now, unless you guys have any question about the high-level stuff. I'll let Erin get into the weeds.
We're all.
That's all I have to say. Yeah.
Name of the website?
Oh, currywatersheds.org.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We've been working. Just take a second.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've been working really hard on the SONAR Aggregates Study, and so you'll be getting an invitation on that. We've had some pretty incredible people that have come from all over the country. And at the SONAR, in fact, Staff Plague is going to be working on a, kind of a rough draft edit of some of the filming we did in this, this SONAR. I mean, it's just really tremendous. That's why we're in the sloughs there.
And some cool data.
Up to tidewater several times. And we basically tracked the whole bottom of the, of the river, you know. They got me pretty close out to the ocean, which I have no interest in.
Right.
I'm a river boy.
Well, a little sketchy.
Anyway, thank you very much. We may have more questions later.
No, I'm happy. You guys give me quality time, I'm available. We're working from home and, and the office sometimes, so.
Like I said, you'll get an invite, very important.
Thank you, guys.
All right, again, thanks for having us here. I know when Court emailed me, he was like, how's ten or twenty minutes? And I was like, how's two hours? I could talk about weeds forever. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to kind of get some more public awareness around our weeds. So, um, so my name's Erin Minster. I'm the technical coordinator for the partnership. And we do have another staff member who's our in-house herbicide applicator, Dustin. You'll probably hear me say his name a few times here, so. He's the real boots-on-the-ground guy. So, what we have is, our Currys Most Wanted is what we call it. And basically, it's, these are our top priority weeds that we are, we actively solicit funding and try to control in the county. So, um.
Counselor.
Just for clarity, the, um, the Soil and Water Conservation District serves, the Board serves as the Weed Control Advisory Board for Curry County. There's an IGA with the county for the district to control the, to administer the weed control district. And then, obviously, our other partners, the councils, also help with this through their projects. But our top priority weeds are gorse, jubater grass, also known as pompous grass, two species of knotweed, Japanese and Himalayan, Spanish heath, Cape ivy, and biddy-biddy. And actually, meant to take biddy-biddy off. We'll talk about that at the end if we have time. And you'll see some little letters after those, and those are important because basically, these weeds are listed at the state level. And these, those letters, A, B, and T, define how the state approaches controlling those weeds. So, A lists weeds.
I'm sorry, somebody waved to me out there.
Oh.
This is a great seat, because you see, I apologize.
Sure, sure.
I like waving at you too, though.
Yeah, hi. So, the, so A-listed weeds are generally weeds that there's just not a lot of them anywhere. It's usually early detection, you know, the, the state really wants to get on those. And, and they're in small enough quantities that they think eradication is possible. B-listed weeds are much more abundant. Most of the weeds on the list are B-weeds. And that's, that's where you get into more control, containment, using biocontrols for control. But there are places where it makes sense to try to eradicate, depending on where you are in the state. And then, from those two lists, they will designate a group of them as T, which is a target. And those are the weeds that you can successfully enter into their granting. So, it's the Oregon State Weed Board, their granting opportunities tend to fund the T-list species. And the Oregon State Weed Board is part of the Department of Agriculture program. So, gorse, we'll talk about that first.
Number one.
Number one, number one offender. You know, it's not going away anytime soon. That's the first thing, and you know, that's too bad. But, so gorse is, it's got a lot of threats. It destroys native habitats. Obviously, there's a wildfire risk if you've never, you know, if you're not really familiar with gorse. It's a plant that has a high volatile oil content in the, in the leaves, or the, they have modified leaves that are spikes. So, basically, when it catches on fire, it kind of spits fire. It's like oils come off of it and they're flamed. It's, it's, it's really high, highly flammable. And then there's a high economic loss associated with gorse. In 2014, the Department of Agriculture did a, an assessment of the top weeds in the state and what the economic impacts were. And gorse was number three. Himalayan blackberry was the top. But currently, at the level of infestation of gorse, they project about almost half a million dollars in annual losses to personal income because of loss of land use essentially, you know, farmlands, forest lands. If all the lands that can, that gorse can inhabit were infested, that number jumps up into the quarter-million-dollar range is, is the estimate. So, it's, it's a, it's a real money problem, as not just a habitat issue or wildfire issue. If you're not familiar with gorse, this is the lovely plant here. It's perennial. It has these modified leaves that are spiky and are terrible if you have to actually get near it. And so, they grow three to ten feet tall. It's a shrub, it gets kind of tree-like, it forms very dense thick. It's like in this bottom right-hand picture. This is an area in Curry County. It's almost a hundred and twenty acres of contiguous gorse, so it's a terrible place to be. I felt like I was in a horror movie walking through there, to be honest. So, felt like the cougars and everything are just going to come out and get me. But, um, and it's, it is a legume, it's in the pea family, so the flowers look very much like pea, you know, pea plants in your garden. And it typically blooms, you know, March through May. Sometimes it's February, sometimes it's all year. Gorse originated in Scotland. It really likes our temperate rainforest.
I was just going to say, didn't Banden burn because of this?
Yes, uh, yes. Banden, the 1936 fire is particularly attributed to heavy gorse infestation. The earlier fire that was in nineteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah, twelve thirteen. There was, from reports, there was not a lot of gorse around when that fire happened, but after that fire, the gorse really spread through Banden, and then the subsequent fire where the town burned down. They, it was an east wind event, and like I said, this stuff, I mean, you can go out in the middle of the winter.
So, is it mostly in northern Curry County?
Yeah, so, um, I have a map here coming up real quick.
Okay.
So, the way we approach gorse, obviously, we can't do it ourselves. So, there's the, so several years ago, the Gorse Action Group was formed. It actually was spawned from the Curry Wildfire Preparation Team. They found, they felt that in their, they, they were responsible for putting the last iteration of the wildfire protection plan together for Curry County, and they found gorse to be a really high priority for wildfire preparation here. So, that kind of spawned off into the Gorse Action Group that now has a lot of partners in Coos, Curry. We've had partners in Douglas County, because there is some gorse in Lincoln City and in the interior. And there's, we've had participation from Lane County as well. So, it definitely, you know, anybody that's got gorse, all of a sudden hears people getting together about it, they tend to show up. The Gorse Action Group does have their own website as well, it's gorseactiongroup.org. There's lots, all, all day long about gorse. We recently put together this strategic, our, the strategic kind of approach where, to kind of explain to folks how we go about attacking the gorse. So, this map is, it's more of a graphic, but it, it does come from real data. And what we've done is, is define these, what we call containment areas, these bright red big blotches. This is Banden up here, Port Orford, and we have a small one just outside of Brookings as well. The, those containment areas are where the gorse is thick. Like, it's just kind of everywhere, you know? Everybody's property has some, there's big, big infestations there. And then from there, it kind of starts to peter out. And what we mostly focus on is, are these outliers, is what we call these. Because the reality is, you know, jumping in here, trying to get rid of it all at once is a big deal. And gorse takes many rounds of treatment to contain it. So, we have to use our resources wisely. But we are starting with, because the Gorse Action Group has picked up momentum, there, we are having more and more projects where we're attacking larger stands of gorse. But they're like a five-year commitment at a minimum if you're going to actually achieve control, so. So, that's kind of the spread there. And then, this, this map over here kind of shows you other points around. And some of those points may represent literally one plant, so don't think it's like a big area. They're just points so you can see them. Yeah.
Is, how is it you guys decide what areas to try and go after?
You can't talk from back there, you have to come up to a microphone.
I'm just curious on how it is, Chip Brewer, obviously, commissioners, everybody, hi. How is it you guys choose the areas that you try to attack? And I only asked one question, or asked that question because of the Port Orford landfill, we have an overabundance of it. And I do know our roads department goes up there and mows and sprays, but it is still very prevalent.
I wonder if it sprays.
I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, so, so, so particularly in those types of situations, it's a, it comes down to partnering, right? So, and I have been in talks with CTR over the years about their, their issue at the, at the, at the transfer sites in, in Port Orford. These projects can take a time, take time to get put together. So, it's really about the will of others, you know, come, we, we don't force anything on anyone. So, yeah, there has been some talks. But basically, we do try to, to focus on those outliers first, and then when there are projects more, because that's in a containment area.
Right.
So, it's like, does it make sense? But we have talked about the transport of seeds and how that, what that used for.
That would be my concern more than anything at that.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a concern. That could be another meeting, that could be another presentation, so.
I have a question on the gorse. What time of year does that seed out usually?
Um, so anytime it blooms, and like I said, typically, it blooms in February through March. You can walk around big, big patches and see plants blooming any time of year. So, it's generally in that early springtime, and it's just right after the, um.
That's when it drops the seeds, the new seeds are around?
Yeah, yeah, so it takes.
So, if you're going to cut it, you want to cut it before that time to kill.
Yeah, and, and they do take a while to mature. So, you know, they'll, they'll bloom up, and then, and it's really weather-dependent. Like, two years ago, we were trying to do some mapping with aerial imagery. Because when it's real blooming, it's real easy to find. What happened was, it bloomed, because it was nice and warm, and then we had that cold snap for like a month. That kind of shut it down, and those flowers went to seed. And then it got warm again, and they actually started blooming again. So, you ended up with like two sets in the springtime. If it's, if it's the right conditions, it'll just keep blooming. So, it's, but it is pretty, it's about a month or so after the flowers. And so, those are the pods. The seeds are tiny, you can see they're like three millimeters, a little smaller than a peppercorn. Annual, from the literature, in the production of one gorse plant can make five hundred to two thousand seeds per square meter, which is a three-by-three square. A gorse plant only takes two or three years to get that big. So, you know, we're talking, the big plants are making thousands of seeds all the time. And the, and this is, and this is the crux of the gorse problem, because these seeds last a very long time. So, what you have is, you end up with one, one plant by itself somehow, because these seeds, they get dispersed, birds, actually, the, can I go back? Yeah. Wanted to show you guys something, touchy mouse. Okay. So, see the little yellow bit on the end of the seed? So, that's a little fat body, and that is there to entice the ants. Ants love that little thing. That is there to make the ants pick up that seed and walk it away. So, we'll see this, we'll see plants go away from like the main plant fifty feet, a hundred feet away. The ants will drag these seeds all over the place. When we mow large patches, we see a lot of ants. So, that said, this, this guy here, this was a loner that someone reported. And, you know, they like to be alone, nobody likes to be alone, right? So, so they make seeds, lots of them, oh! And then this is what happens. And then this is what happens. This is south of Banden, out on the beach. Gorse seeds can last at least 30 years or longer. The literature goes all the way to lifetimes. So, um, that's the real issue with gorse. It's not killing the plant that's standing there. It's the seeds that landed before you killed it. And then any disturbance will, will create, cause these seeds to germinate. And so from the literature, seed banking in the soil, the top four inches can range anywhere from 133 seeds to over 20,000 seeds in a square meter. That's a lot of seeds. And they're gonna wait for you to do something so that they can get their chance. So, um, oops, I should go back. So that's gorse. Um, like I said, I, we can talk for days about gorse. There is a Gorse Action Group, um, meeting coming up and anyone's welcome to attend. It's, um, I believe it'll be on the 18th of November this month. So if you're interested, you can reach out.
Ooh, I can't wait.
Yeah, I know. It's thrilling. Um, so, yeah, any questions to go about gorse?
Easier ways, uh, in our entity, I guess, to handle it or...
So, yeah, so people should report it. And, and most importantly, those loner plants. If you're wandering around out in the woods or whatever you're doing and you see one by itself or a couple by themselves, those are, you know, pound for pound, the most important thing to be going and getting. It's cheap to run out there and kill it. It's way more expensive to leave it. And then we have acres of it that take five to 10 years to control and, you know, go, go through that seed.
Removal or killers?
Yeah, so we spray it, um, but we do a lot of mowing and mulching to reduce the amount of herbicide we have to use. Um, and also the mulching can suppress seed sprouting because you've got a cover on the ground. Pulling it is okay if it's a tiny plant. Um, if it, if you think it has seeded out, it should, you should be careful about that because what you're doing is disturbing the ground when you pull it. Um, and, and you will germinate more seeds. So it's okay, but you gotta go back and, and double-check. Um, just for reference, um, we maintain a database with all of our weed sites in it. There's around, there's over 200, 2,000 weed sites that we made, that we manage in Curry County. 450 plus are gorse sites, so it's a lot. And this year, we actually did a pretty good inventory. We went to 275 of those and 116 of them showed no signs of any new plants, which is a great success for us. So it's, it's really that unseen work that goes on with those outliers that is so important and just so undervalued because nobody ever sees Dustin doing it. So, but it does happen. Okay, so jubilis grass, this would be definitely number two. And if you live in Brookings or Harbor, you probably have one in your yard. So we have over 290 jubilis sites in our database. There's more every day. Over the years, we mostly had, um, focused on keeping it from spreading north. It was already infested pretty heavily in Brookings Harbor area. And we were really looking at trying to keep that spread from moving north. We do work with ODOT on this. But it's, 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 there's a lot of it out there and it's, it's definitely finding its way around. So a lot of people call this pampas grass, and so I just want to cover that. There's two, there's two species in this genus, um, cordidaria jubilis and cordidaria celloana. Celloana is the true pampas grass. It, uh, requires male and females to make fertile seeds. Jubilis grass, on the other hand, makes cloned seeds of the mother plants. So it doesn't need any friends. It'll just make more seeds all by itself. They blow in the wind. It's thousands of seeds. Um, it's also sometimes called purple pampas grass. So people really like it. That's our biggest struggle. Um, you know, they're like, well, I don't have to look at my neighbor. You know, that kind of thing. It's very widespread in California if you've ever been down there. Um, but it is really spreading rapidly from the south. And we're seeing it really infest our, our forestry, our industrial forestry sites. That's becoming a really big source of seed production for us. So, um, we do do some work on forestry lands, but mostly in the roads and not up in the clear cuts themselves, so. Yeah, so a couple of years ago, we, um, the, John Brazil, um, was the fire, fire chief for Harbor Fire District, and he reached out to us because he was concerned. It's a, you know, it's fire hazard in his district and it's real bad. And he really wanted some help with that. So we put together a project, uh, made a good argument to get some money for it because, again, places where weeds are really ubiquitous like this tend not to get funding. But because we had a good partnership, um, you know, that, that really worked out. We did get the project finished. Unfortunately, John was not around to see that and that's really a bummer because, but we, we carried on the work without him and I, I know he would be happy about it. So these are just a few pictures from that effort. Um, and we've really increased our awareness in Brookings Harbor. We've gotten a lot of calls this year just from landowners, um, you know, wanting services. So we, we do spray jubilis grass, um, and, you know, I mean, this place, this is, this is, this is an old access road. You can barely walk through this. Jubilis grass is sharp on the leaves. If you've ever had to tackle one, it's not fun. Um, very sharp. We, we spray them, um, in late summer. That's the, the correct time for the herbicide application, one, from a legal label perspective and two, the effectiveness. So they can be dug out manually, but again, we get into that problem of disturbing the soil around where they were. It's very difficult to get all the roots. They have a, a tuber root. And as they go over the years, actually, new ones will grow on top of the, the original. And so you can end up with these tall things. They're just soil and roots and getting all of that away is difficult. The other problem with manual removal is you have to put that thing somewhere upside down so that it dries out in the bottom. I have seen burn piles where people put them and then they didn't burn it for whatever reason and then they start growing again. And, you know, and there's plumes and it's like, this is, that's not the way to go. So, so there's definitely care needs to be taken with manual control. Uh, with chemical control, it takes several months for it to die, which can be, um, uncomfortable for some people. They want to see it turn brown tomorrow. Um, that doesn't happen. But once they do turn brown, there, it's incredibly easy to remove the dead material. Um, it's actually shockingly easy. If you've ever actually tried to cut one or deal with one that's alive, once they're browned, it's like, oh, you just kick it over and all the stuff falls apart. It's pretty, pretty simple. So, so these are some areas in Brookings that we have tackled. They look a lot different now, a lot of dead, so.
So do you come out and do this and...
Yeah, so some of these, so sometimes when they get really big like this, our funding is specific, right? Like, we can't do huge patches, but we will as if, so we can, we can do a fee-for-service for folks. So, so some of our jubilis sites have turned into that where we, people pay for our time and materials because our grant funds just cannot cover all of those places. So, yeah, again, people can report to us and say, hey, I want, I want to get on the list. I have a feeling since there's been a lot more awareness and probably after I'm on the interwebs today talking about it, um, you know, we'll get a lot more interest in jubilis grass. And actually, our season for spraying this year really ran over some of our other efforts. But it's really important to us because it's, it is a real problem weed. It's a fire hazard. Um, if you're bored, Google "pampas grass control" on YouTube and you will see people setting them fire, on fire all over the place and it's terrifying because they're, they're pretty candle-like as well.
Are these that same thing that you had pointed out to me down here in the parlor?
You have to come up to the microphone.
Is this that, uh, pampas grass, the grass that you had pointed out to me down here on the south end, the, the balls we had?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because actually we did pull him.
Okay, cool. So, yeah, so we did spray some for you guys um, because the county didn't have some back here in the back. So, and then Chet took care of some as well. So that's great. This is what we need, right? We need everybody on, all hands on deck. Um, I think that's my last jubilis grass slide. Any other questions about jubilis grass? So regardless of people, whether people want us to spray things for them or they're interested in dealing with things themselves, spray is not always the answer. Again, like I said, if you're motivated, you want to do things manually, there's just usually a few other steps you need to take care of. Um, we are more than willing to help people with treatment plans if, if they wanted to tackle things themselves. So feel free to reach out. These things, there's a lot of nuance with these things to get it right and not waste your time and/or your money. Uh, knotweed. So there's two kinds, uh, Himalayan and Japanese. Uh, these are, these tend to be in riparian areas. Uh, our early, with this program that we've been doing for about 20 years, knotweed was one of the early weeds that we tackled. They increase erosion along our riverbanks because they're not a very strong plant. Again, it's a rhizome and the stalks are hollow-stemmed. They're, they're very easy just to break down, you know. And so what happens in high flows, so they will outcompete other native vegetation. In a high-flow event, basically the high-flow velocities rip the plants out because there's nothing to them and then it exposes a bare bank to the erosion. So it actually increases bank erosion, um, you know, along rivers during high-flow events. Um, the difference between the species, not a whole lot really matters there when you're talking about control, other than the Himalayan knotweed, which is this one with the longer leaves, is a little easier to kill. The Japanese knotweed, it's, it persists a little longer. And the persistence, um, has to do with the rhizomes. So knotweed has an incredible ability to store energy in these rhizomes. And so often our treatment is to spray them and we'll do that for two or three years in a row. Um, it happens late in the year in the fall. And, and then we wait a couple of years because what we find is the plants tend to come back, keep coming back with their, they don't grow well and, you know, for efficacy with herbicides, you want to have enough plant material to take up the herbicide that you're spraying on there and have it translocate down to the roots to kill it. There's a lot of literature out there where people will spray, um, like round up on it, which basically burns the leaves off but does nothing to the rhizome underneath. So they could do that for the rest of their lives and get nowhere. Um, so there, like I said, there's a lot of nuance with these things, but just here's some pictures. Himalayan is there on the left, Japanese on the right. The big difference are these leaves. And the Himalayan tends to grow like lower down. See, it's kind of not real tall. This is a site in Gold Beach. And then the, the Japanese knotweed, it gets a little taller and, and it does die back this time of year. So after it flowers, the main vegetation dies back. So there's really a short window available for controlling knotweed. We manage, uh, to over 275 knotweed sites. Only 15 of them are the Himalayan knotweed. This past year, I believe all of our Himalayan knotweed sites showed no regrowth, which was great. Um, the Japanese knotweed, uh, we just don't have as much, we, we haven't covered as many of the sites, so we don't have as many gone on that. But Sixes River is a main focus for knotweed. Um, it's, that's probably the most infested watershed. The Rogue River has some and the Winchuck River has some. So definitely want to look out for. You can definitely see it from boats. The stems are kind of red. And like I said, it looks kind of bamboo-y. Sometimes people feel like. It also looks like the wild cucumber, the vine that grows around here, so. Yeah, so keep an eye out. There is another, sometimes you'll hear people talk about Bohemian knotweed um, because there is another species, giant knotweed, where the leaves are like huge. Japanese knotweed and giant knotweed will hybridize and form Bohemian knotweed. Really hard to tell apart. Again, at this point, there's no real reason to differentiate other than, you know, like they all need to be controlled because they will, they cause a lot of damage in other places. Uh, the East Coast, Pennsylvania has a lot of them. And actually in England, it's so bad that in some of their municipalities, there are deed restrictions on properties because they cannot get rid of it. So that is not what we want and we're gonna try to get rid of it as best as possible. The next one is Spanish Heath. Um, this is a kind of a special one. It's, um, so there used to be, it's, it's a, it's a heath. And people, it's for floral arrangements. It's a, it's a dry thing that stays green in floral arrangements. And there used to be a nursery in northern Curry County, right on the Coos-Curry, um, line. And, um, the, there was a storm and their greenhouse blew to pieces and blew the heath out into the, the area. So we see it mostly along the Coos-Curry line up there, um, which is a lot of ag ground. And, um, it, so it's really important for our primary growers. One of the interesting things about this plant that makes it successful as an invasive is that it alters, it has the ability to alter the soil pH so that nothing else wants to grow around it. Um, that could be a real issue, um, because you're just popping up, it's, that's how it wins, that's how it wins. And a lot of noxious weeds use that tactic, so. And then people often ask, how do I tell that heath from heather? Because there's a lot of ornamentals. Both of those things have, you know, hundreds of varieties that you can buy from nurseries and stuff. But the real difference is heath has needle-like leaves and heather has flat-scale-like leaves. So that's your first indication if you're concerned that you have it in your yard. We, we do not see Spanish heath in, like I said, most parts of the county. It's really up by the Coos County line. Um, but what we have up there are a lot of cranberry growers. It's big industry. Um, and it really likes to inhabit those soils around the cranberry box. So these are just some before and after pictures of places where we've treated it. And you can see it's, um, this is, the top one's actually a reservoir in a cranberry area and then these are bogs behind these other two. This last single one, your bog, besides all the other weeds. Um, it definitely likes those areas, so, um, that's, we stay on top of that one. We only have 27 sites, um, and we've been hitting it hard for several years now. And seven of them have shown no, no new plants in the latest survey we did, so. So that, you've definitely got good successes there. And the last one I want to talk about is Cape Ivy. So we are all pretty familiar with English Ivy, um, which is also a state-listed noxious weed. It's so ubiquitous, we cannot get funding for it usually unless it's associated with like a restoration project. Uh, but we do get a lot of questions about it. We do care about it. Uh, Ivy will kill trees. So whatever you want that tree for, don't let the Ivy kill it because it will. It will grow up there. It puts extra weight on the stems. It can rot the trunks. Um, it's a real issue. But then we have this other little Ivy that most people don't know anything about. It's A-rated, which means there's not a lot of it. And actually, it's only documented in Oregon in Curry County. It's definitely an issue, yeah. It's definitely an issue in California, um, which is why I got on Oregon's radar early. And, you know, we've been finding it in Curry County. So we have, it's not 16, we have 15 because we've decided that one of those locations, uh, we've gone back to it a couple of years now and we're pretty sure it was a misidentified English Ivy, not Cape Ivy. So, you know, knock one off just because it was the wrong Ivy, doesn't mean it's not still a problem, but. So to tell the two apart, this is a picture with both of them. The Cape Ivy looks a lot like new-growth English Ivy, um, or Irish Ivy. There's, there's been a lot of study that shows that what we all call English Ivy is probably 80% Irish Ivy. Again, you know, it's, yeah, it's for the plant people to get excited about, but either way, they both will, you know, are definitely invasive. But the thing about the Cape Ivy is the leaves are much thinner than the, they're not as heavy and waxy as the, as the, um, English Ivy or the Irish Ivy. And they always have these five points on there. So no matter, like, this is a fairly young leaf right here and it has, you know, the five points going around. And so, and it doesn't have deep lobes. It'll stay pale green. So if you're, if you're out looking, wintertime is the best time to find it because it, it tends to grow under things. Um, but it stays that pale green, the leaves are thinner, and they're just not deeply lobe. You get kind of that more maple-leaf-looking leaf. So, and the, and the sites are scattered around. We have them on the Winchuck. There's a couple in Brookings. That one, that picture I just showed is actually on the little Rogue River Walk down here under the bridge. Um, that was a recent discovery. Kelly found that. And, um, but again, it was like, you know, a cold spell happened and the stuff that was growing above it kind of died back and all of a sudden you can see it. And that's, and so then this spot here is out in Pistol River. It's our largest site. It covers about three acres on a hill. And the reason I really want to show this is, um, all this, so we lost, believe it or not, it's three acres, but we lost track of it for a little while. Our GPS point at the time was not great and we were like, where, what part of the hill is this? Because you could not see it. Because all this brown stuff, what is the wild pea that we see around, it, you know, it grows pretty deep, pretty viney. Um, we had a frost happen several years ago and I was driving through Pistol River and I was like, whoa, ah! There it is! I just pulled over because all this stuff died in the frost and here's the Cape Ivy left. So what we're seeing when we first get to a site with Cape Ivy is we always underestimate how much is there, um, which is the scary part because it just slowly creeps away underneath of everything. It does not care about the shade. And so, um, what we tend to have to do is kind of burn back what's on top, excuse me, till we can get to the Ivy. So that's Dustin there, the elusive Dustin Squatch right there. He's spraying, excuse me, spraying the Ivy and, um, yeah. So we've been hitting this one pretty good. Uh, Department of Agriculture does come down and helps us with our Cape Ivy sites. They're very interesting. Excuse me. I tickled my throat. Uh, very interested in killing this. So all these pictures are the same site. So that's Cape Ivy. We're hoping we can eradicate it. Um, as of now, it's been three or four years since we started killing Cape Ivy. A couple of the sites were on cliffs in Brookings, so that, we didn't treat those for a couple of years till the landowners were more agreeable about erosion concerns. But to date, we have two sites that have no, no regrowth on them. So, so we are making progress and, um, yeah. That's kind of the end of my presentation. Like I said, I could talk for hours about this and there's a lot of nuance when it comes to effectively controlling weeds. We, you know, Kelly was mentioning funding hits. The weeds program is also a program that has taken a big hit. Like I said, the Oregon State Weed Board normally has an annual grant, um, program for weeds. We tend to get around $60,000 to $70,000 a year just from them for these top weeds, basically. That having opportunity will not exist this year. Um, and there's speculation as to whether or not it will return next year. So we've reached out. BLM is a good funder for us with weeds. Um, Forest Service Rack and the BLM Rack can both be, um, good funders of weeds. And also on the gorse front, um, the Wild Rivers Coast Alliance is, has funded a lot of work with gorse and really helped move the Gorse Action Group along, so. So we do have other sources and we're always looking to, you know, make sure those... have other sources, and we're always looking to, you know, make sure those things are happening, to keep this. The last thing you want to do with weeds is, is, you know, drop the ball, right? Because you've wasted the work you've put in, you know, and you're right back to ground zero. And that, that's heartbreaking. And it does happen at times, you know, it happens for so many different reasons. But we really try to minimize that, and make sure that we have continued funding when we launch into particularly the bigger, bigger infestations, that we have funding to continue that work, so that control is achieved.
I think we canceled my appointment. It was my way too long.
Again, I really thank you guys for having us here, putting us on the interwebs. And yeah. And again, anybody has weeds, questions about weeds, please reach out to our office. We're here to help as best we can.
Thanks.
What generated this was an inquiry we had with Harbor down in the ditch there you mentioned.
Yeah.
And I thought the first thing to do is contact you. Good job. And you're working with, with that, that party to hopefully, yeah, do some eradication. You didn't mention Himalayan blackberries or Scotch broom as even in the top five?
I know. You know, again, those are the ubiquitous ones. We do deal with them in our restoration projects. But it's hard for us to find money to do, deal with them. Now, for the Scotch brooms, you know, they're often where GORS is, and they are treated the same way. No problem. Boom, boom, get them. You know, we will treat them, you know, when it's around and it's convenient and we have what we need there. But it's, it's that problem of, you know, it's so widespread. And, you know, you can only focus on a few things. So, yep.
So I had a question. We do some GORS eradication or GORS, you know, mowing and spraying at the CTR landfill up there.
Uh huh.
And we're basically, you know, covering the costs. And is that, and I know it's in the area you talked about, is there any way that that would qualify for some partnering or something that we could, I mean, I don't even know if it means that we have to help somebody else with theirs or something like that. I mean, how, who would we talk to if we wanted to explore that further?
So you can talk to me.
Okay.
And yeah, like I said, I have talked to Luke, the manager. I actually came to the, one of the Solid Waste Committee meetings once, you know. Mostly, my concern was with Ridge Creek, because there is some there. And, you know, if you looked at the map, it's few and far between, like, between Brookings and Gold Beach. And so that's like a priority. And, but we did talk about Port Orford. And from my perspective, I think the biggest issue is the management of green waste for CTR. So we're under quarantine. So they cannot, so they're burning it, but they're, they're hitting some issues with DEQ and smoke abatement, right? So, because I know they tried their best, like, they're not supposed to accept weeds to green waste. Like, that's one of the laws. But I also know that they are, like, people are hiding shingles in there, you know? So like, it's kind of a tough job. And to see weeds in dead piles of vegetation is really, and then seeds, like, that's not even possible. So, you know, I have talked to Luke about, you know, what can we do? Because they can't ship this stuff elsewhere either. So, you know, there was a recent, the GORS Action Group is actually, they put on an air curtain burner demonstration recently, which is a, basically an incinerator for vegetation. So you get a lot less smoke generated. So I think there's like two things, right? There's the controlling what's there now, but also preventing additional, because if green waste is constantly coming there, you're constantly, particularly around Port Orford, there's a lot, it's in that, you know, heavily infested area. They're not going to be able to stop all the seeds coming in. So I'm super interested in a project. I think there, we can find funding, you know, to, to at least partner and maybe pick up some of the costs. That's usually what happens, is we try to find ways to pick up different costs in different ways. But like I said, we can also enter into intergovernmental agreements, so that we can pass money if we need to, you know, to get the job done. So I'm more than interested.
We've got some to play.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys, everyone.
Erin, Kelly, thank you very much. Hey, we, real quick, we have that Department of Interior budget. I don't know if I included you on that, but that was from Senator Roblin's office on a lot of money. You mentioned BLM a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you familiar with that?
I did, I, you sent me that email.
I did.
Yeah, and I was on it. I haven't seen actual budget tied to that plan. But, you know, we did put in some BLM Rack grants. There's one we put in this time around. And we do work with BLM pretty closely to get, we have a couple of other grants with them right now. So I'm excited to see what actually comes along.
Keep, keep us posted. And we also have Sarah Navarro and, oh, gosh.
Norma Klein.
Norma, from Oshu, I'm sorry. Thank you. But they're, they're on that.
A lot of names.
Yeah, so.
But if they make a do it, you four can pull it off.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Confident. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a couple minutes.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Call me if you have more questions.
Love it. Sorry, I had planned a meeting for 3:00 because of the, thought this was only going to be a five or 10-minute presentation. It turned out to be a 50-minute presentation. So I had to go cancel the other meeting. So we are moving on to projects discussed community development. Director position, Brad Rickert.
Yes. Thank you. As you all know, Julie Schmelzer has resigned her position at the end of this year. And one of her roles was the Community Development Director. And for that reason, this will leave a vacancy for, for that position. So the, I think it is expected that the person who, so really, this is a discussion to discuss who, who could be, who could serve in that role and what their compensation would be. For the person who does serve in this role, it would be to make sure that all the departments within community development are working together, feel any complaints from people who want to talk to the department head supervisors, act as the liaison between the community development divisions and the commissioners, and then serve in the role of administering contracts, such as a DEQ program. And so Julie had put it out there to all of the department heads to see who would be interested in filling this role. She, she only got responses from two individuals. One is Summer Madison, and the other is Dave down in Code Enforcement. And he's a little more, his thoughts are more of, if needed, if, if there is no one else. So her, her suggestion is, is Summer Madison. But at this point, open it up to discussion as far as who, who could, would, she would fill that role.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, we're going to have a new board in just a month or two or less. And, you know, I think I, first, we want to see an assessment on the need for that. I mean, I'm just going through the seven departments and wondering what that would involve and who would need oversight. You know, to me, right or wrong, it gets back to commissioners' responsibility and oversight with those various departments. But also, again, emphasizing, okay, let's take a building. Does it need a supervisor position that the commissioners couldn't handle on a once-a-month basis? Or how about, about facilities maintenance? You know, I'm going to be going back to my September 2nd parts of, you know, reorganization way to save, I think, a lot of ways to save money. So I think this might be premature right now. And I'd also want to know what the qualifications are for anybody that would take that position. And again, assess the need and, and the whole aspect. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for now.
So we're talking about community development, and we're not talking about Director of Operations. We're talking about developing, you know, community, things in our communities and stuff like that, which is basically.
Well, what we're talking about is oversight of a building official and oversight of the planning director. And Summer Madison doesn't have any experience in either of those two areas. So I don't think there's any basis for putting her over those two professionals at all. And I don't think those two professionals need any liaison between them and commissioners whatsoever. So I just, I don't think Summer Madison has the qualification to oversight a building official or a planning director.
Thank you for your opinion.
Oh, yes. Well, I was Summer Madison's supervisor for some time, and I speak from experience.
Okay. So do you have a recommendation?
Well, we heard, can't really get into the details, but we also heard about the cost of this position. And we're already funding Mr. Rickert and Ms. Schmelzer through the end of the year. And we have some projects that we need funds for. So my recommendation is really that no action, and don't fill the position. And give it time for Mr. Rickert to look at and for the board to look at, to see if there's even a need. I also am very involved in resolving problems with the building official, with citizens, and with the planning director, and with code enforcement. So I really, I just don't see it. I don't see the need.
Okay. Yes?
In addition to building and planning, that position would also be overseeing code enforcement, survey, surveying parks, economic development, emergency management, veteran services, and, and some of the programs like, like the DEQ. I believe Summer does have, does work with several of those departments currently. And as far as compensation goes, it would be, it has been suggested 5% or 10% help.
I work with the DEQ and the Port Orford landfill. You just have the code enforcement officer in here directly discussing a program with you, and actually kind of making some suggested changes on one. So again, I don't see any basis for any kind of intermediary between the code enforcement officer and the board. I've just witnessed him present to the board without any intermediation on multiple occasions.
I sense hostility in here. Go ahead.
No, I, I don't sense hostility. I, I sense that we, as I've said many times, we're going into an uncertain time, and we're always, we need less, less responsibility on our people right now. It's interesting that both Councilwoman and I mentioned, what is the need? And by the way, I didn't know, veterans isn't under the seven departments of community development, is it?
Don't know, but.
It is?
As far as I know, it is.
Okay, thank you, JJ and Mr. Rickert. So in just case there's any misunderstandings, Mr. Chair, between you and I, I wasn't suggesting all departments. I understand the seven departments of the community development, and, you know, someone involved in all that with parks and, and emergency management, all of the above. I just want to emphasize, I don't right now see any need for additional supervision for any of those departments. I might change my mind. But right now, as I see the direction of this county, and again, emphasizing the uncertainty of what is around the corner, we, we have no idea. We have growing cases of COVID. We have economic issues. We have businesses going out. And I don't want to grow government anymore. I just want to hit the skids for a little bit, so we can do a wise analysis. And I don't see, I just don't see the need to really perceive, promote anyone right now. We just need to really do our jobs and be aggressive on what our responsibilities are. Show up early, leave late. Thank you.
Well, my opinion usually is that when, once a new commissioner or anyone new is elected, there should be no major decisions made with the old board, major decisions anyway. So I might suggest, because Ms. Schmelzer is here till the end of the year, that position is filled, that the incoming board member be involved in the decision, because that'll be his purview for the next four years. So.
So are you saying delay any decision, or?
I'm saying for right now, I think it should be until we get a new commissioner seated and sworn it. So that's who should deal with it, not, not this board.
Okay, so you, you would delay the potential of another, of that position?
Because Ms. Schmelzer is already here till the end of the year.
Excuse me. I thought you said Summer. My apologies. Okay.
I might have said Summer. I'm getting old.
Well, I think, I think you said it right.
I meant Ms. Schmelzer. Julie will be here till the end of the year. So the position's covered. Once your new commissioner is seated the first week of January, then at that point, you can make a decision for if you want to have someone for, to do community development, or have, how you're going to cover it.
Get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Nothing further. This workshop meeting is adjourned.